Call to order the Bryant Board of Zoning Adjustment Meeting, November 13th, 2025. And call the roll, please.
Hooton?
Here.
Stanton?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Edwards?
Here.
Irwin?
Here.
Thompson?
Here.
Speed?
Here.
Pinfield?
Here.
All right, we have a call and we will operate under that. There were minutes from the June 9th, 2025 meeting in your packet if you even remember back there.
Yeah.
When they hit an approval.
How many would be accepted?
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All right, we won't sidestep this. Andrew, read the DRC report.
All right, we just have one, 4015 Robinwood Circle variance, David Mullen, is that right? Requesting approval for variance on side and rear setbacks for accessory structure, no recommendation.
All right, we will have a public hearing tonight. We'll let, on item three of the agenda, 4015 Robinwood Circle variance, David Mullen requesting approval for variance on side and rear setbacks for an accessory structure. Let Colton tell us what's going on, and then the applicant come forward for any questions, and anybody in the audience will have the opportunity to make comments.
Yeah, so this is a variance on the rear and inside setbacks for an accessory structure located in the backyard of the residence. There was an existing patio deck that they had back there for their pool, and they were replacing that, but when they're replacing that, they're going to be rebuilding and actually making enclosed or brute space as well. But it's going to be one and a half feet from the side of the property lines. According to the accessory structure setbacks, it's supposed to be five feet. So they're going to be a little bit closer to the fence, but it's going, what they're trying to do is to put it in the same location as the previous deck that they had there. This is located over Robinwood Circle, close to Commonwealth Drive. There is no recommendation from DRC in planning, just due to the fact that it's a public hearing on the variance request.
Can you do a Google map of that?
Yes, let me pull up the GIS real quick.
Take the words out of my mouth.
And blow it up for Jim so he can see it.
That's what I can see.
So it's not in a utility easement, though, or anything is in it?
So there is a plated easement back there.
Nothing?
It's for all the lots in the subdivision. There is nothing currently located back there. This is the property and the house, and that's the deck in its current form. I think the new one comes out just a little bit further this direction with the enclosure. This is what that looks like.
So the back of the property on the right?
Yes, sir. It's kind of back.
Go left, ma'am.
And it's a pool?
Yes, this is a, this is a pool. I think that's the idea, is to have a little pool house.
But it's, it's, we asked him, but it's deck related, correct? I mean, it's not a slab, I mean, it's wooden.
Correct, yes, it's just a wooden village. There's actually a couple pictures where they, except the replacement posts there.
I mean, if you had to get into the easement for something, you still can get into it if you remove.
What do the neighbors said, or I guess we'll figure that out later.
There's no one here.
Yeah.
All right, we'll let the applicant move, come to the podium, and please state your name and address.
David Mullen, 4015 Robinwood Circle.
Is that pretty accurate? Pretty accurate, the description of what's going on?
Yes, sir, it is. And all my neighbors really don't have an issue with it.
You've talked to them?
Yes, sir, and when we went to the previous meeting, actually, one of my neighbors came with me.
Okay. Any questions of Mr. Mullen?
Is it going to be walled in? I mean, like, is it like a pool house, or just like a deck with like?
No, ma'am, it's going to be enclosed. The post will, because the post will carry the roof, and then the, there'll be non-structural walls that'll be put in between the post.
Okay.
It's non-insulated, just put a roof on it.
Based on the picture here, this is the open deck area, and then the rest of it here would be enclosed.
Oh, got you, got you. So it's not going to have like facilities or anything like that in it, like toilet and?
Yes, ma'am.
Or it is?
One toilet.
Kind of like a little outdoor cabana bathroom or?
Exactly, just a little half bath out there.
I have to look at it.
My wife's trying to keep everybody out of the house. Used to.
I can't believe that.
That kid's running in and out, why?
And we have a lot of kids.
Any other questions of that? Okay, we'll, we'll forward anybody in the public to make any comments, and if they, if there is anybody, which I don't think there is, but if there is, you have the right to come make any rebuttal statements to that.
Understood.
All right, thank you, sir. Anybody here tonight want to speak for or against, or make any comments on behalf of us? Do not see anybody, last call, anybody here? Okay, we'll have a roll call vote.
Just real quick, just to have it on the record, I did receive two phone calls about this. Each one was just curious what was going on when I described what was, what they were asking for, both people that talked to me didn't have any problems with it.
Thank you. Okay, now we'll have a roll.
Edwards?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Speed?
Yes.
Hooton?
Yes.
Irwin?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Pinfield?
Yes. Okay, did pass. Well, we have another motion from our.
Make a motion to adjourn the public hearing.
Motion second, any discussions? All in favor, aye. Our public hearing is closed. Welcome to leave, stay, and we're going to get into some other business, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we will call to order the Bryant Planning Commission meeting of November 13th, 2025, and.
Real quick, we just need to adjourn the DZA.
I thought that's what we did.
You adjourned the public hearing.
I thought that was closing the public hearing.
We will adjourn?
We could have done a motion.
Yeah, I thought, I did adjourn. I thought you did it.
I did.
Jim, make another motion.
Close the public hearing?
Adjourn.
Adjourn? Excuse me. Make the motion to adjourn the public hearing, and.
Motion second, any other discussion? Should it, yeah. All right, now we're closed, they're gone. We will open our Bryant Planning Commission meeting of November 13th, 2025. Please call the roll.
Stanton?
Stay there.
Johnson?
Here.
Edwards?
Here.
Irwin?
Here.
Hooton?
Here.
Thompson?
Here.
Speed?
Here.
Pinfield?
Halfway. All right, we had two sets of minutes, one from 10:23 of 25 of a regular meeting, and then a 10:22, 25 special planning commission meeting.
I know that makes sense, correct?
That's incorrect.
That's incorrect.
The date's incorrect.
It's the 13th, 10/13 was.
10/13, sorry, I put 10:23 on the.
Oh, man.
But it looks like it's 10/13 on the actual minutes.
Type it.
But there are two sets of minutes that hopefully you read.
Oh, we'll bet.
I would entertain a motion.
I know they'd be accepted.
Motion in multiple seconds, all in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Colton, any announcements tonight?
Only announcement I'll say is that we're still working with Craft and Toll on our Conference of Growth Plan. We'll have our kickoff meetings the first week in December. We're really excited about that, and so we'll have our steering committee, as well as some stakeholder interviews that first week of December.
What day is that again?
December, is it first through third? Yes.
Colton, how long do you think that'll take? Will it take?
Overall plan?
Yeah.
It'll probably take about a year.
About a year, so it'll happen this time next year. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, this might be the only place I'd say this. This isn't really our business, but we spent time with Mrs. Handy that needed the bottom of the fence dealt with.
Yeah.
Caught me in Kroger, and she said it still hadn't been done. I said, well, I'll mention it tonight, and maybe somebody in authority will get that taken care of, so I told her I would mention it.
Place that under the comments section, please. All right, thank you. Andrew, you want to read our DRC report?
All right, 1607 Cricket Road, conditional use permit. Joel Cricket requesting recommendation for approval of a conditional use permit to build an accessory structure on the lot prior to a primary structure that was recommended approval. Then we've got 3213 Main Street, Sweetland Site Addition, Hernan Rangel requesting approval for site addition for the new patio. Midtown Bryant, 12 Paisley Park, and Block Two, minor modifications from Midtown Code. HD Homes requesting minor modifications from Midtown Code for sidewalk locations at 12 Paisley Park, and change to frontage type at Block Two for A Street. That was approved. Sidewalk modification to Block Two. Approved modification to sidewalk at 12 Paisley. Contention upon city engineer approving the design prior to install. Yassie, Philip, 66, 6101 Highway Five, signed permit. Arkansas Sign and Neon requesting signed permit, approval that was approved.
Thank you. Okay, we, we will open our public hearing tonight with item seven, 1607 Cricket Road, conditional use permit. Joel Cricket requesting approval for a conditional use permit to build accessory structure on a lot prior to a primary structure being built. Colton, tell us what's happening.
Yes, so this is a piece of property that Mr. Cricket owns next door to his house. He wants to rebuild a accessory structure there to use. This is going to be built before a primary structure is built on the lot, and according to the code, you have to have a conditional use permit for that. So that's all he's doing is coming in for that conditional use permit in order to build. The lot is over an acre in size, so it would fall under that 10% of the total square footage of the, or, yeah, total square footage of the entire lot, so he is well within that. I think the overall building is going to be 40 by 70, and that would include the 10-foot little front porch that he will have on it.
So Rick, would you pull up Google Maps?
Yeah, sure. This is located off Cricket Road, kind of close to the I-30 interstate, just past the storage units. This is a lot right here.
Where's the new road, where's the road going to go?
Yeah.
Go in?
So it would, it would come across this property or a portion of it. Let me pull that up real quick. So I had a schematic, I'm not drawing it in here, that showed where that road would go, but it would actually come right through here, and kind of come down in front of that building.
Okay. Will it have any impact on that building location or anything?
No, so Mr. Cricket got with Ted and I ahead of time, and Ted actually put that building drawing into the plans that we had for that, for that chief connector, so that in the future, if it was ever to be made, that it would stay outside.
Is that in the future from your plans, or do you know? Don't know.
I have no idea.
That's a mayor question.
I know there's some plans there somewhere.
I do know they have plans.
Well, we could approve it if he'd give us the right of, anyway. I'm kidding. Oh, okay, Mr. Cricket, if you don't mind coming to the podium, if you have anything to add to what Colton has?
I don't, I'm Joel Cricket. We're going to try to put the barn back up that was there, 136 years on the same family, and all of that property is the same, and one of those will be a place where it'll all be together once upon a time, it will be, and I'm going to live there, and I just need a place to put my stuff.
Yeah, I mean, basically, you're, you're living on a large piece of land that has multiple parcels.
That's it.
So to you, it's like one big lot, but the city looks at it as two parcels as being two lots, which aren't lots, but anyway, so you know why they're having to be here. Any questions of Mr. Cricket? Okay, we'll have a roll call vote.
Speed?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Edwards?
Yes.
Irwin?
Yes.
Hooton?
Yes.
Pinfield?
Yes. Thank you. Mr. Irwin, would you like to close the public hearing?
I'd like to close the public hearing.
One other item? Here, I'm messing up now.
I have to rescind what I used to say.
We never got a second, so lack of a failure of a second, we'll keep moving. Number eight on the agenda, zoning code changes, I was trying to make that happen.
Yeah, I know, yeah.
Public hearing regarding changes to Section 4 and 10 of the City of Bryant zoning code, and we'll let, called solar arrays and vegetable gardens, we're going to let Colton explain it to us.
Yes, so this is some changes to Section 4 and 10 of our zoning codes. Some of these are in regards to the state laws that were passed earlier in the year, so we come into compliance with those. We have until the beginning of the year to come into compliance with some of that. The accessory dwelling units, that was a big change that happened, so a lot of our rules that we had in place didn't have to adjust. There was a, hey, a law passed on vegetable gardens to allow them in any residential district, so I just changed some verbiage on our code to allow for that. We discussed this this morning, planning commission, or, no, sorry, DRC this morning, so some of those, it's going to be adjusted just a little bit to most, some of the wording, but I've been going to fix that before we take it on to city council to review it. But it was just making that, the vegetable garden its own little line as a use in agricultural section there.
Vegetable, does vegetable include herbs and fruits?
Yes, so it's vegetables, herbs, fruits, flowers, pollinators plants, leafy greens, and other edible plants that are cultivated, according to the definition.
Are.
So the accessory dwelling unit for that, the state law requires that we allow them in any residential zone with the same kind of restrictions as a single-family residence in that zoning, and so that's why a lot of this verbiage is in here. One of the main things I want to point out is at the top of page five, the new little star I added for the residential lot setbacks, say the front setback for residence or structure shall be at minimum the distance listed for existing front facade of the principal structure on the lot or parcel, whichever is greater, and then define the, it defines the front facade line as well there. The reason I did that is because with an accessory dwelling unit, the way that it's worded, since it, we can't make it more strict than a single-family residence, it can be placed anywhere on that lot as long as it meets the setbacks. So with that in place, that, they would have to build the accessory dwelling at least at the front facade line at the, of the existing home or behind it, so it would still meet the requirements of what we have in place currently for accessory dwelling units. So that would keep somebody, if they had a house that was set off the road, from building another little small dwelling unit in the middle of their front yard.
And Colton, this only affected the ones with living quarters in them, is that correct, or is this?
Yes, it's only dwelling units, so it doesn't affect accessory structures.
If Mr. Cricket would have come in next year after this passes, would he be able to do what he did tonight?
So if he was wanting to have it as a dwelling unit itself, then he would, it would, probably would affect the square footage on it, because you're only allowed 1,000 square feet according to this, but as far as.
Was him building it on the lot before he builds his primary with that?
So he would, it wouldn't affect that, he'd still have to.
Okay.
Give the conditional use permit for building a accessory structure before the primary structure.
Even, but it has a living space in it, so he would not have passed tonight, because he's over 1,000 square feet.
I believe so, yeah.
So it is more, it is going to be more restrictive in some ways. If somebody has two or three acres and they come in and want to do what he did tonight, they'd be turned down, and there's no variance allowed to this, correct?
Well, if it's a, it depends on what they're kind of wanting to do. If they were, if you wanted to live in that, it probably could be considered the primary structure on the lot, depending on the size of the building there.
But then he'd have a problem when he went to build his primary.
Yeah, but he would have a, you know.
This thousand, the thousand square foot is a state law.
That's correct, yeah, the thousand-foot minimum, or maximum, is 475% feet of the size of the home.
If you're going to build one to build a primary, you're probably going to wind up doing a two-lot subdivision, or.
But you could.
If you're on a large tract.
If you're on a large tract, yeah.
Yeah.
If it gets much larger than that, I mean, I'm assuming on accessory, I mean, you're just piggy, pigtailing off your, your home, your primary resident utilities, but if you're going to build 2,000 feet, you're probably going to want separate utilities.
This doesn't have any effect on the rule if there's no dwelling unit in there, a living unit, though, correct?
Correct.
That's what we're talking about this.
It's an accessory structure of any kind, just.
It just falls in our old rules.
Correct.
This is just if you live in there like a Motel 1 quarter, or an Airbnb, or, you know, attached, something like that.
Yes, so the definition is a self-contained and independently accessed unit on the same parcel as a single-family dwelling of greater square footage. That includes its own cooking, sleeping, and sanitation facility.
Okay. It's, it could create more problems. I mean, it could create more issues of people coming in. So could he come in for a variance and ask to have a little bit more square footage, or would that?
I don't think there's any opportunity.
No opportunity.
I think it's a state law.
Far as I'm aware, in the state law, there's no opportunity for that.
So we don't have a choice? We have. Unless they come back and change it next session? Well, I mean, like I said, there's ways he could get around it, he could call it his primary. When he builds his house, he could attach it to that, so there's ways.
Based on the definition, that sounds like the single-family dwelling would have to be in place first, the primary dwelling, before you could do an accessory.
Accessory, but his isn't an accessory dwelling, as the example, Joel's, it was a.
Barn.
Barn, storage type.
But he was going to live in it.
No.
He did say he was going to live in it.
Yes, he did.
I thought he said he lived in a house next to it.
He said he was going to live in the structure.
I thought he said there's stuff in the structure.
I thought he meant he was going to live on property.
He was going to live on the property. He already lives on the property, he planned, he lives in a house there.
Yeah.
Oh, well, he, I, I did too, I thought he said he was going to live.
He kind of just slid it in there, yeah, I noticed that, yeah.
I already said he was going to live on the property, but.
I, I thought he was just living on the property.
That's what I heard, yeah, that's what I heard.
Because he was going to use it for stuff. Not that this is about him, but I was.
Right.
I mean.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just thinking, you know, of course, we don't have very many cases, I don't think that this would really.
Right.
Since it doesn't affect accessory structures. I'm just thinking of all the variants as we get on accessory structures, and this really doesn't apply.
Right.
Yeah, so it does say in our Section 10.1 that accessory dwelling units shall only be allowed on lots where there's an existing single-family residence.
Okay. This is kind of, it was kind of confusing, it's more than trying.
Yeah, the whole law is kind of confusing to read.
Seems pretty obvious.
That's new. Sorry? That's new with the law, confusing, everything is confusing. Why was this law passed?
Yes, that's my question.
You know, is this, is there some reason that something's going on? Is this to, to do with Airbnbs, or?
Great question.
Well, I think it was rooted in the, yeah, just in other, another area of, I don't think it was Airbnb, I think it was just people building, being told no in some areas, according to a rep that I talked to, that they should have the right if they want their mother-in-law to have a home or a location on their property.
Yeah.
And in the vegetable garden, I don't know, I guess there was an area.
I guess there was a town or something where somebody was concerned about their having a vegetable garden, and not being told they couldn't have it, so that's why they put that into law there, so.
All right, any other?
Yeah, so the third section is 10.1, and that's utility scale solar arrays, and it's a new section added to that, the special provision section of our code, and this is a section that we added based on a recommendation from council. City council wanted to go ahead and put something in our code regarding a utility scale solar field, just so we have some rules and regulations in place. This was actually written by Ashley, city attorney, she was able to find this, like, version of, similar version of this for another city that had a section like this, and then use that ordinance. I use that to kind of, kind of tailor it more towards us as a city, to try to accomplish the things that the council wanted to accomplish with it.
Does this affect what the school just came through?
I'm sure it's fine. It would, so if someone wanted to do a large-scale solar field over a megawatt field, that it would have to be at least five acres minimum, 10 acres max, it'd have to be located in the industrial mining zoning in the city. It'd have to be located in the industrial mining zoning in the city, and there's a lot of strict setbacks to follow, as well as some studies on glare analysis, decommissioning plan, there's height restrictions, fencing restrictions, and like a screening and landscape section as well.
The school would not have been approved under this. They would not.
I'd say we won't.
The good thing out of it is the decommissioning, the, that we talked about, they're, that's put up a bond. Did we change the wording of that?
So, I, I haven't yet. So, the version you guys have still says bond as per letter of credit, but DRC this morning, we talked about, we'd prefer to do just a bond for that, and that'd be based on the estimated cost for the decommissioning.
So, if the company that was doing it went bankrupt, and it just sat there and grew up and looked terrible, the city could go in and use that bond to clean it up, put it back to its original condition. Would that work? So, and it has to be renewed every five years, I think.
Yes, so the charity bond will be, our ordinance reviewed the city every five years, makes it felt, so, well, the, you also have to have a conditional use permit for it, and that is valid for twenty-five years, and then it's valid for renewal after that twenty-five years if they want to keep.
So, during that conditional use permit, we could impose stricter restrictions on fencing?
That's correct, yeah. There can also be more conditions imposed on it.
Which, aside, we probably should have been a little more stricter on the school as far as screening, because they, we talked about they haven't done what they, or they did more than what they said they would do. Cleared more.
Oh, really?
They cleared everything to the fence line. I think that's what y'all said. Is that correct?
That's what I was told. I haven't been out there and checked that since this morning.
So, they just go clear it all the way where? Always.
They're supposed to leave a buffer, and they're going to, I think they're going to put some screening.
Maybe five feet or something like that, wasn't it? Am I wrong?
Yeah, it was, it was significant.
Yeah.
But they're going, they're supposed to be putting in some screening, some, some shrubbery screening.
But that's not trees. I mean, that's.
I'm not sure.
I think we put it in there as a contingency.
Put in a twenty-foot, or a hedge that will grow to twenty feet tall approximately, not any taller, which is a southern magnolia wax myrtle. It's, it's an evergreen hedge, and it's recommended by the University of Arkansas. It's something they prescribe for all the solar units across the state.
So, how come code didn't take this?
They're still in the process of building it out there.
So, when did they, they took all the trees down further than the, than we thought they were going to? Is that what they did?
After all that.
They weren't, that's what the statement is, is the seventy-five feet.
Yeah.
But his claim was that it was still going to cover part of his solar panels, and therefore he had to write, tape it down, because if he left them, he said he had, he had to write, cut them down to twenty feet, which would have killed what was there, because, I mean, those, that's full-grown forest.
So, they knew they were, they knew they were going to do that before they even came in here?
We have a letters agreement between the city and the developers on this, and what was all agreed to as far as the setbacks and the putting in of new vegetation as far as the screening goes, and what, what they could put in there. I'd have to look back to see exactly what was stated in that, but I know it's signed by the, the owner of that company as well as the mayor.
So, using that as an example, because we're in a public hearing here, not getting too far down the rabbit hole, that's all contained in here to make sure we can regulate what.
That's correct, yes. So, based on that is why there's some, some of these sections in here as far as the glare analysis, the fencing requirement when abutting a residential, the setbacks being as strict like they are, as far as the landscaping and screening goes. Evergreen vegetated buffers averaging a spacing of six feet on center shall be placed along the property lines abutting residential zone property or a public right-of-way. So, if it's, you know, along a street or along a residence, they would have to have that trees planted there to.
Where was that on the trees? I was trying to find it.
It's on page eight.
I've got that.
Number five, at the very bottom.
I got you.
But Colton, you can only go in that one zoning now, correct?
Yes, with a conditional use permit, or it can go, there's a section in here that says, "Other districts as determined by the planning commission and approved by the city council." So, if someone wanted to try to put one somewhere else, they would have to come to planning commission first for the approval of the planning commission, or, sorry, for, I guess, discussion with the planning commission on that, then it would go to city council for their actual.
This only affects ones over one gigawatt, is that correct?
It's one megawatt.
One megawatt, not a gigawatt. I guess a gigawatt would be a lot.
So, that approval process would be like a conditional use approval process?
Yes.
So, if somebody came in and went to do half a megawatt somewhere, this wouldn't apply?
If it's a utility-scale solar system, so designed to serve like an off-site electrical needs, at that point, it would still.
Or if it was a business, it would be a site plan type thing.
Yes, if it was like a business and it was just used for onsite purposes, that would fall underneath the accessory solar energy system, which is defined as a solar array designed to serve onsite electrical needs. So, a business or something would fall underneath that, just to, you know, power their facility, not, you know, generate.
If it wasn't on the building, they'd have to get it approved, a site plan.
Yes, yeah. If it wasn't like on top of the building, we'd have to.
So, Colton, this is kind of picky, but if I just bought a house right there, and they're just now putting up the foliage and so forth, if it's slow-growing, it could be ten years before you actually have a barrier.
It depends on, yeah, the plant that gets put in there. I'm not familiar with, you know, that tree and how fast it.
As the one he mentioned, I think they have to start at a certain height.
Yeah, they would need to be, because you could literally be there ten.
No, I think they have to start over, how, let's, let's start over ten feet or five feet or something.
Does it say that?
I know in our landscape ordinance, there's some rule on how the height of trees.
Has to start.
Diameter of a tree.
But this would still be a conditional use, correct?
Yes.
Where we could impose.
It would still be a conditional use on top of the restriction on the zoning.
So, you could come in, an individual case, and put more restrictions.
Put more restrictions.
If need be.
The only, the only fallacy I see in our screening requirements and landscaping is we require them to plant it, and they're through with us, and a year later, they're all dead because no one watered them.
So, I did include, I did think about that.
Saw that.
For B, underneath number five, I put landscaping must be maintained and replaced as needed for the life of the project.
But how do you, that's when I read, that's when, I mean, how do you enforce that? I mean, do we have an?
In the letter recents of the city, they wrote that in there, they would maintain the, but Phil, it's a letter, but.
And I'm not just applying it to this, I'm applying it to the hands, I mean, go around to half the businesses in town, I mean, you know.
This would be assessed.
So, at least for this case, I know section F for enforcement and relocation, it says failure to maintain the site or comply with the permit conditions may result in revocation of the.
There you go.
Permit and enforcement under the city code.
There you go.
So, we would find them if they didn't comply with the, you know, letter that we gave.
You have teeth.
And, yes, there's, there's nothing there that we, steps we could take.
Is there a time limit on that? I mean, they can't do it for thirty years.
For the project?
For what he was saying.
Well, it's twenty-five-year CUP, conditional use permits, and you've got twenty-five years, and it's through the whole conditional use.
Okay, okay. What about maintaining, mowing and stuff of that nature around those trees?
It says in that, it says maintain.
Yeah, it says.
Landscaping must be maintained and replaced. I mean, mowing, God, it's landscaping.
A lot of people putting goats on property who have solar now.
I've been talking about it with this one.
So.
All right, any other questions, Colton?
Yeah, that'd be a good dance.
Hey, let's have a roll call vote.
If anybody is, wants to speak on this, you know, public hearing open anybody.
We just messing up all the way. I have a story about that. Anyway, I won't say it while we're being recorded, but, anybody in the public, Butch, that would like to talk, or, even though you've said plenty.
I thought you said.
All right, anyone else? Last call. Seeing none, you want to make a rebuttal?
No, it's, this will just go to.
City council.
Yeah, so it will be recommended by you guys with the changes we talked about, and then it would go to city council, where they'll have, you know, three readings on the board notes.
Does our engineering department have anything to say about it?
We had a good discussion this morning about the size of the farms. You know, the one, the only thing that really, I kicked around a lot was, there was two things, was screening requirements, you know, and that can be artificial or, you know, plant. And then there was the size of the farms themselves, that, you know, we use, it says one megawatt, and we talked about how big is a one-megawatt field?
How big is it?
So, it's around four to five feet.
Wow.
Just. So, it's a pretty good size, and so even a half a megawatt is going to be pretty large area. But I think there's language in there that has to do with if they're setting up the farm as a utility, where they're selling power back to the power utility. But if that's the intent, then usually those farms are bigger than one.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? We'll have a roll call vote to make a recommendation to city council for.
Erwin.
Yes.
Hooton.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Speed.
Yes.
Edwards.
Yes.
Stanton.
Yes.
Penfield.
Yes. Now, Mr. Erwin, would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Make a motion to close a public hearing. Thank you.
Most second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing we have no old business, no new business, I would also entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move adjourn.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.